And do I have a motion for that?
I make a motion to elect Susan.
I will second that. Any questions, discussion? Including from Susan.
I'm not sure that I want to accept that. Is there an assumption that Vice Chair will become the Chair?
You've been on the committee longer than I.
Perhaps, but it's not necessary and you can always decline. I guess it's a vote of confidence in our faith in you of doing a good job to fill this seat if he's ever absent.
Okay.
For an evening.
Okay.
I can say I didn't take, when I accepted Vice Chair, I did not take it based on the assumption that that meant I would eventually at some point become Chair.
Okay. I would just state that my intention is not to become Chair. But I'm happy to fill in for Jim if need be. And that will always, so that's a primary function.
It is the primary function.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Take your roll call vote, Keith.
Aye.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
I will be a aye as well. Congratulations, congratulations. Lastly, on this line of business, we need to elect Secretary. Could I please have a nomination for Secretary?
I'd like to nominate Keith.
I'd like to second that. Questions, concerns?
I will take that. Thank you very much.
That beer makes you a good-looking secretary.
Yeah. It was just coming in.
Any other questions, concerns? Okay, roll call vote, Keith.
Aye.
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, everyone. Okay, next is, it is my responsibility, I believe, to appoint a member and an alternate to approve payable and payable warrants. I...
So, I would just, generally, this needs to be a person who is readily available to come and sign on a regular basis between meetings. A busy work schedule might not be great for it.
Yep. Traditionally, I think Keith, myself, and does anyone else fall into that bracket? Angela?
And I'm also.
Is that something you want to have in Keith there last run? Is that something you want to take on this time, Angela, or will Keith be the backup?
Um, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I will appoint Angela as the member and I will appoint Keith as alternate. But the next is, I need to appoint Assistant Treasurer. Roll call, do you probably have an Assistant Treasurer?
We're required to have an alternate to the Assistant Treasurer. Our Treasurer is a part-time, once every two-week employee. And the event that he's ill or something, we need somebody else to be able to sign checks. It's a requirement for regional districts. It's currently Angela. And all of her bank accounts have the Assistant Treasurer as a signer now. It is, it is helpful to maintain continuity on that to the extent possible. Otherwise, we need to have the income go and fill out a bunch of forms for signature.
Should we keep that the same? Yeah, I think we should. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, fine. I will appoint Angela as Assistant Treasurer. All right, this time I will appoint Superintendent Zany to the Assistant Valley Collaborative Board of Directors. I will also, was there any, I'm sorry, was there any questions, comments, any discussion around that? Okay. The next order of business is to appoint Kristi Turgeon to be a member of Central Office to be copied and all emailed. Any questions, concerns? Nope, then I will also appoint it. It's a lot of emails. Uh, our, through the agenda, okay. Next order of business would, if any, be an opportunity here where we would review and interview any candidates to fill the open seat for the Boylston spot on School Committee. We do have some folks from Public here tonight, so what I will say is, we can dig into this later at a different time, but if you know anyone, the School Committee positions are an extremely important role within our community. And as you have all learned through some of our recent things that we've discussed, looked at, and done, the opportunity to give back to your community, it is, one thing I will say right now, this is currently a temporary position, so meaning, to Cliff's point earlier, there is an election coming up in November. So meaning, it would be a position where you would, a temporary, between now and November position. So meaning, if you so chose to take a potential run at it, you would have to run in for an election in November, but you could also choose to opt out. So I think it's a great opportunity for someone who might be thinking about it to gain some better knowledge and understanding of what their role might be and see if it's something longer-term they might be interested in volunteering for. And if anybody, a hair knows of anyone or would suggest anyone, I'd be willing to reach out to those folks and have those conversations. So, please, it is a role that we do need to fill. It is important. So, if public's help would be extremely beneficial in this case. And then we have approval payroll of payable warrants. Making their way around. Now we'll get to the me ones. One second, Cliff. Four times. Well, now, moving to business aside, Consent Agenda. And I will, my first question, Cliff, do we vote on these all separately?
No.
We can run both, all as one vote.
Run.
Okay. Could I please have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda rights?
Second.
All of those, any questions, concerns?
Kristi, did you see this? Tell me the changes.
Oh.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are moving into our communications portion of our agenda. Don't bug for this, I did see. What's ours?
They're up first. Good evening, good evening, everyone. School is going well for most of us students here at Tohonto. Especially since last Friday, we just had Refresh Day. Which, for those of you that don't know, we had the afternoon off of classes and we got three refreshing workshops that we got to go to to help us prepare for going into midterms next week. I had Bob Ross appreciation, aromatherapy, and net therapy. It was pretty fun. Before winter break, we had Spear Week where the staff were included as a grade per se. Seniors won, of course, and staff came in second, I believe. The Student Council, we also had our first lock-in at school where we slept in the library overnight and decorated the school a bit and did some fun things. Winter sports are going all right. I guess the girls' basketball record is six and three and the boys are one and seven. Coming up, the Student Council will be taking a trip to the statewide conference in Hyannis, which will be a few days. And then after that, the year will fall right into place and end. Are there any questions?
I heard there was a dress-like-a-teacher day.
There was.
Did you participate in that and who did you dress like?
Yeah. I dressed like Tanis Wood. Last year, I took physics and there was this one day where we both wore the exact same thing without wearing it. We plan to wear that again. I have pictures of him there.
Nice. Good question, Angela. Any other questions? No, thank you for coming today.
Yes, thank you.
Always good to get an update. The next portion of our reports is the Superintendent report. And number one item on that list looks to be the topic.
Nature's Classroom. Yeah, I'll do that for us. That's one item. So I think what I'll do is I'll turn, I'll turn the update over to Ms. Tuser.
So, the sixth grade team, myself and Ms. Stugels have had several meetings over the past couple of months. And the sixth grade team would, will be submitted to the School Committee for a request to approve an overnight field trip to Nature's Classroom in Charlton June 1st to June 2nd, which would include a two-day, one-night trip. And if approved by the School Committee, this would replace the previous request to the School Committee for an approval for an out-of-state trip, day trip to Project O. It would replace that, correct. So, that paperwork will be going up to the Superintendent within the next day or two and then obviously onto the School Committee.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions from the committees?
So how is the program, the two-day program, different from the previous program that they've done before?
So the previous program was a four-day, three-night stay in Ocean Park. And so, besides the, you know, the different setting, this will be, the grade six team will be working with Nature's Classroom to make sure that the activities that are determined for those two days align specifically with the science activities that they are doing this year. And it is just really a condensed version. You know, there will not be that travel time that it took, you know, two hours or more to get up and to make. So that will give them some extra hours. So it really is just, it's a condensed version.
And is there, do you have a read on what the participation rate might look like? Do we know if a two-day program would be more appealing or less appealing than to the students?
No.
And so how would, at what point would you gauge that?
The, the team has said that, you know, for this particular trip, you know, due to the circumstances, that this trip will happen regardless of the participation rate.
Okay, so I might just make sure.
There will not be, there will not be a number. You know, like 85% need to say that they are going. They will go with, you know, 65%.
So, I'm just trying to think about how that jives with the letter that was just read by the union. Where they said they want the, the trip to address all children's needs. So, how, how does that jive?
So, you know, because it is condensed and it's a, it's a two-day versus being, you know, across four days, the team will, you know, better be able to plan activities that align with the same type of standards. Because what you, what you are looking at really, you know, is, is two days versus four days.
So you're saying the potential for addressing everybody's needs is, is well-designed.
Is it easier when it's, when it is a two-day versus, you know, a four-day?
But if everybody doesn't go on that trip, if a quarter of the class went on that trip, how do the 75% back at the school have their needs fully known? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, the teachers, you know, just as if a, if a teacher were to be, you know, out at a conference for two days and then, you know, leave lesson plans and activities that continue the learning during their time of their absence, that will be the same thing that will occur with us.
And so they would be substitute teachers?
They'll either be substitute or there will be, again, depending upon the number of staff that is needed with whatever percentage of students that are going. You know, it may be that, you know, if you, the same example that you gave, it may be that, you know, it's two teachers and two paraprofessionals that go while two teachers remain. It depends on, it depends, really depends upon the numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Jim, may I? Please.
So, when we learned, whenever it was we learned, about how participation was a challenge for this trip. And there was some speculation, maybe by committee members, maybe just by me and my head, about like what some of the reasons for that might be in the past. Were they financial? Were they?
Personal.
Personal. I'm sure you're going to have to deal with that, those issues again, about people's, children saying that they're not going to participate. I would certainly hope that, two things, that your team will, and I know you will, but I feel the need to say it, that your team will work hard to find out what those reasons are and to work with those children and their families to maximize attendance. And secondly, certainly, if financial is the issue, to find ways to make that a non-issue for our children and families. And I know you will do that, but I just feel like at this meeting, I need to put that on the table. That that would be, those would be two things that I would hope. And I say those things because some of you know that I have a long experience with Nature's Classroom and both as a principal and a teacher. And, and I know that there were times in my experience where as a school, we had to work really hard to ferret out what the real reasons were why children and their families were not participating. And especially the financial one's tough because that's private and sensitive and all of that. But there are ways to get that information and to offer help. And also, sometimes there are issues that children have that, that we know very little about. And, and, but the family knows and, and you have to work with those families to persuade them, get them to understand that this is a valuable experience and that their fears or concerns or anxieties might be misplaced and that we can do a better job of that. So that's a very long speech and I'm sorry for that, but I just wanted to say that.
Yeah. I mean, the, the team, you know, does work hard. I think that, you know, they, they work with the school counselors as well. You know, we have had families in the past that we've been able to, you know, have some leeway with deadlines for payments because of decisions and, you know, personal choices and decisions have changed and we work with families. But, you know, I think we also need to, you know, respect families' privacy. And, you know, I think we walk a fine line sometimes when we challenge, you know, parents as to, you know, why they, you know, are making a decision that they're making. You know, they may say to someone that, you know, it is one reason when in actuality it is, you know, another reason. And when they say financial, it does not always mean that they cannot afford it. It sometimes means that this is not what I choose to spend my money on. So it's that, you know, it's that, it's that fine balance. But I, but I hear what you're saying and will work with, you know, the team and the school counselors as well to make sure that, you know, people are aware of, you know, I mean, as we do with any field trip, the benefit of, of a field trip and what, what that brings because they, you know, the teachers, because time is, is so precious, teachers look at the field trips that they take and, and the benefits. You know, not obviously, not only just academically, but also socially and emotionally as well.
Thank you.
Could you speak a little bit to the cost of this trip versus the cost of the trip that you're pulling back from the Connecticut trip?
To be honest with you, I, I can't, you know, until, you know, I haven't had time to sit down and take a look at the difference in, in the numbers. You know, it's, we're probably looking at around the same amount of money because of the distance that it would have taken for, you know, Project O and going to Connecticut and out of state, you know, versus being able to, you know, Charlton being closer and us being, be able to be bus there and then the return trip is just actually coming back. Sure. So, you know, we'll be working with Nature's Classroom and the team as well.
Okay.
I can, you know, I can report out on that and it will be in the paperwork as well when it's submitted.
Thank you.
I, I think this is an interesting response to the issues that have been before us. And I'm happy to hear that you, you know, all work together to figure out some kind of a space that might be a solution to the issues that have been put on the table. And I agree with Cliff that there are still issues that need to be followed through on. But I think this is a good, a good space to come to. I think it's useful and I appreciate personally the effort that I know has gone on away from this table to arrive at this place.
Any comments? I have a couple of comments and I will attempt to be as concise as possible. It tends to be my challenge at times. Is it safe to say to the, to the committee that, from what I'm hearing from everyone, that we'd like to see some feedback at some point as it relates to maybe what we learned about participation and the new program and stuff? So maybe in the future, Jeff, we might want to look at what's the best way to provide some feedback from this experience at a future meeting for the, for the committee at some point. Is that, it might seem to say that you guys are interested in hearing about what they learned from participation rates and that type of stuff? So, I guess.
Yes, I, I am. We also have started some preliminary conversation on policies upcoming around making changes to what, what we tend to believe are called sort of legacy field trips. Field trips that have been in place so long that they have become part of the community expectation, shall we say, associated with a grade or something. And we're, we're exploring whether there are policy recommendations we might make to ensure that there is a good change process in place when changes are being considered. So I think we may, we may be looking at some of these topics for more than one place on the committee. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Sure.
I did just want to add something, you know, as to, I know people are curious about these participation rates. I did have a conversation with John Santos, who's the director of Nature's Classroom. Just by chance, I met him at YMCA. What he told me, and I asked him that question, I said, you know, you know, I don't, I've seen such a data and you can kind of make data say anything you want, but I find it hard to believe that somebody would make that kind of stuff up. At least that teacher would not go to that and say, you know, this seems to be dwindling interest. So, even if they couldn't quantify it specifically, they could qualify it and say, you know, after they've been on trip a number of years, say, there doesn't seem to be the interest. And he said to me, he said, I don't know why the trip was ever put at the end of the year. He said, he did his doctoral research on Nature's Classroom. It's really the only research that's been done, real research study. So he did a doctoral study and he's the director. And he says, one of the things they saw is that after, when Nature's Classroom was put at the end of the year, after about five, six years, they start to see the numbers dwindle. And he said, there hasn't been a case that they know that Nature's Classroom at the end of the year has participation rate that continues to be strong. And for a bunch of reasons, that kids get to know each other, they start to form cliques and things and they're, they're just not interested as much. So, what we're seeing in the schools is consistent with what the recent search has said on this. So, I would think the only alternative, if there is one, is to move it, is to move it to a place where, you know, that's to the beginning of the year, which is sort of in line with what would happen if it was at the end of the year in the elementary schools, students didn't know each other. So, you know, I think that, you know, his research supported that participation rates go down and why they go down. So I think what we're seeing here is completely in line with what you've been seeing. So if we're going to do anything, I would think that would be one of the things we'd have to, at least the first thing that would make sense to look at.
But I agree and I think, you know, I think one of the, though my professional experience is not within the education world, I think it would be, without reason to think that we shouldn't learn from our experiences, right? And I think in a situation where it's something to this nature, right? It's important, I think, we do learn from those experiences, right? I say this a lot since I've been on School Committee, which is, a School Committee, we have a certain role, Cliff talks about a lot. But it's really to empower the educators and to put our, our, our district in a position where the people that we put in place to educate our children are empowered to do so. And to the level that was provided to us today, you know, we have to trust in that fact. At the same time, there are all these things that we can learn from as it relates to, I talked about this in the last meeting, there's all these things that we can, you know, learn from as it relates to, say, communication or the fact that we are a small community and the difference five or 10 responses can make just in the programmatic things around a, a field trip, right? So, you know, I think it's important to, you know, I want to thank everybody who put the time and effort into coming into, not every resolution solves everybody's concern or challenge, right? The goal is to do, and at the end of the day, we're trying to come to a resolution that is in the best interest of the kids, right? So, I want to thank everybody, parent groups, obviously administration, staff, teachers, the effort everyone's put into because I think, you know, it goes a long way when we come together as a community and try to do what's in the best interest of the kids. So, thank you for that. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. Moving to the next agenda.
Yes. As for about a collaborative, I probably should have just added this as a communication, but I just will say a few words in terms of our part of this collaborative office, you know, discounter.
Do you want to give a minute for anybody to, wants to? Sorry.
I didn't want to.
I meant to do that. If anybody.
You don't want to state that.
The EDC updates. I said, let everybody try to hold on to what I'm talking. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, so was, you know, we're main part of the collaborative. We currently have five students that are serviced by the collaborative. And though, you know, you look at the, you have the report, you know, it's costing. you know, you look at the, you have the report, you know, it's costly, it's still an enormous savings over what it would be if we had to send those students out to a, to a private We did have an audit done this year and everything looked fine, were in good shape, started to outbuild the building, the current building in Marlboro. And one of the programs, I think it's the Evolution Program, it's in Shrewsbury, they, they rented space in Shrewsbury, but Shrewsbury's seen a big increase in their student population. They now have to take that space back. So more space for the Evolution Program. I mean, you know, one of the things that's good about this program is that the superintendent serves on board, so we do get, we do have, get to look at the budget, we do get to see what they're doing with their programs, what they're doing with their spaces. So I think it's money, it's money well spent. I probably should have, again, I probably should have put it in as a communication. I'll skip to the S R O update.
You have to let that collaborative know about our, they still have us listed as three different districts on there that are.
Oh, they do? You just make a note of that. I'll do it at the next meeting, which is sometime, it's the last Friday in the month.
We can catch that.
Sorry. You know, we tend to.
I love that.
I first have to start getting my name, C A N, no, C H A N G I.
Yeah.
I think they've got it. That's our old update. I sent the, I think Christie uploaded the email, the communication from Mr. Meekum, who's the select board member, to the Boylston Select Board of the S R O update. So I had conversations with the, the people at the Department of Ed who oversee the implementation of the new S R O regulations and the template. And what they said was, if you, if you're just going to implement an S R O just fresh, never had anything like, you've never had an agreement, then it needs to have all of the, it needs to check all of the boxes that the template does, or else it's going to be, will be out of compliance with the regulations. And so, you know, what I talked about with both police chiefs and what they have available, it would really require more, it would require more police officers. And so I think towns will be visited at some point. Until then, they've agreed to some enhanced patrols around the building, things like that. I know Officer Parker was in Boylston today, so they are coming into the buildings. We do have a M O U in place and we'll keep that in place until further notice, until something's done at the, at the town. But any, any effort to change that would put us even further out of compliance. So.
Who pays for the training that these officers need to take?
I think the, I believe the schools pay for the training. I'm not positive about that.
That should be part of the M O U, is it?
It's in the M O U. And it's actually says who covers that, I can't.
All right, as long as it's in there.
But it is in the template. I think it's, I think we pay for the, it's an officer that is paid for, it says, school officer, we pay for the professional development.
I think Susan's question was, does the current M O U say that or are you talking about the M O U that?
The current M O U does not say that.
Oh.
Because it wasn't required at the time. I'm sorry.
So, but under the current agreement, to your understanding, S R O, the S R O is going to be.
The one we can have in place by training, correct?
I thought I saw that in the letter from the Boylsons.
Yeah, so Chief Sahagan has talked about sending two of the S R Os who act as S R Os to training.
Under their budget or under our budget?
They have approached us about putting it in our budget, so I'm assuming it's under theirs. We don't have it, we don't have it in our budget this year, it's not something that's we put in the budget.
And we don't have an agreement to pay more.
We do not.
Okay, then we're fine.
And, and they're required to have that training?
Yeah. Under the, under the new statutes, they are.
But.
But that doesn't mean, if you didn't have an S R O at all, you didn't have an M O U, you didn't have an agreement, you could still send a police officer to training because all this, all of the S R Os, all of the statute is based on appropriations. So if you didn't have the money to do it and you said, well, let's, let's just get an officer, get them some training, you could actually do that as an organization just directed specifically at training.
Yeah.
Police officers for.
Right.
So that's what he's talking about, even though it's not part of the current agreement, I believe he wants to send some of his, two of his officers.
That's, that's what I'm saying, I want to make sure that the S R Os are trained and it's clear who's paying for the training. That was my concern. The, the numbers of S R Os that you referenced that, under the new, a new M O U whenever that gets developed, would probably require more S R Os, you said? Is that, did I hear you right?
It would, it would require, require to, the police department, it would require additional offices.
The state regulations would require it?
No, so, so when they asked, well, what would you like to see in the schools? I gave an outline of what we would like to police and I looked at the template and this is what I'd like to see. And the, and Chief Sahagan determined that that would require hiring another officer. There's not enough officers on staff currently.
To do what you want us to have.
Correct.
That's what we're doing.
But they could do the other things that are outlined in that communication from Mr. Meekum to the Select Board.
So you spoke about Chief Sahagan.
Yes.
Did Berlin, the chief, have a similar response? An additional officer being in there?
No, because at Berlin, in Berlin, more, they have a different model than it takes for a while, where they have an officer who's in the school and teaches classes. So they already have sort of a community policing model going on. So I, so he was here for a crisis meeting, but we, you know, we just agreed to keep it as is until, again, until the town has a chance to talk more about it. But it's a, it's a different situation up there. As I say, they have someone who's in the building on a regular basis and they have had. The issue here is that this school is in Boylston. So, you know, it requires more personnel anyway, if you want someone at all schools. If you wanted somebody who was available in the mornings when the students come in, during lunches where there's a lot of movement, then after school or just when schools letting out, because those are the times of the day, from my perspective, when most of the movement is happening in schools, is when most of the doors are open. It's the only time you have all the students in one place that you can, you can watch them to see if there's anything, you know, out of place, stuff that, you know, a trained police officer would maybe pick up that teachers would not. So you would have to have here and at Boys and Elementary. It's just a, just a bigger situation here.
So that, so that situation, were there to be two police officers? One, the training of one officer would be charged to one cost center, and the training of the other officer would be charged to the other cost center, which would be the E S, is that correct?
If it was possible for the training, it would just be one budget line. For the regional district.
Really?
Yeah.
Under the terms of our agreement?
Yeah, it would have, we would, if we just put it under.
I don't think so, but we can discuss that some other time.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Elementary schools have a different.
Well, right now, any trainings paid, would be paid for by the town? Not by the.
No, right now, he, Cliff means that if we, if we did a new template, correct?
Yeah.
We did a new template.
And we're talking about training only.
I would think we would put it in a professional development line.
We have, we have, we have P D lines by school, we could, I mean, I assume the officers would go, like, they wouldn't have an officer assigned to an individual school, we'd probably take the total training costs and portion it between P D lines in each school. So we could charge it to each school. But we didn't have to do it by person, we could take the total.
Oh, gosh, no, yeah.
Are you, do you anticipate moving toward a revised M O U that aligns directly with the state's current expectations?
You know, I would hope at some point, and I think, you know, we'll talk more about this next month, I think we're looking at increased enrollments in our schools and it's just start getting more students. I think that, you know, becomes more of a factor. So I would hope at some point.
But you don't have a timeline for going there at this point?
I don't, I don't.
Okay. The, the only thing that, I mean, I'm sure you're thinking about, is when you read the state, state guidance or regulation here, there's a lot of the language for the M O U is about clarity, clarity and roles between the school disciplinary and the town police, for example, clarity about what the reporting procedures are, data collection procedures, a lot of clarity in things. And I, I think those are important to attend to, whether they're in the M O U or not. If we continue on with our current M O U, I think that we should be taking a careful look at some of those pieces of the regulations that would probably benefit us to make sure we're, we are being clear about some of those things specified.
Well, even though it's not, even though we don't have the M O U, it's still covered on the statute. So for example, in Massachusetts, police officers are not allowed to take part in discipline, for example, so on suspensions, in some states they can, I think in Florida is one of them. So, but in Massachusetts, they cannot. So even though we don't have an M O U, everything that's, everything that's laid out in there is part of a statute that we have to follow anyway, regardless.
Okay.
So again, so if we have somebody coming through the school and there's a discipline issue, the police officer by law cannot get involved, unless it's something, something criminal in nature, then they would be able to.
Okay.
You know, a normal suspendable offense, they would not be, anything that, you know, Sal would normally handle, the police officer could not.
Okay.
My concern would be any adjustments we made to the, what happens if we do, some of these conversations continue forward, you don't want to make any adjustments to the current M O U, does that expose you to, you to rethink the M O U, meaning your time? This is down the road before we do anything, so I don't know that we're even in a position to even make any adjustments, right? To existing M O U, because that would take us out of compliance.
No, that's right.
Yeah, so I think it's a difficult part if I have ideas and thoughts that we would love to implement, but we can't adjust the current M O U, that would take us out of compliance.
But we could still do those things like training.
We could do those, yeah.
You know, so if the, if the chief wants to send his, sends his guys to training, they could still do that.
Right.
And so it doesn't, because it's really two different things, the M O U is a, is a school document and the S R O is a police, you know, in that apartment. So they could still do some stuff, as is laid out in that, I think he had had some communication, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Thank you for that update.
Okay, I'll go to the, this regionalization outward before I get to my, my vehicle. You have this picture in the, in your packet, this was done by one of our op teachers last, last, well, you know, last year, Shell Mari, Mari. And so if you look out here, there's this banner, and she came up with this idea, which I think was a great one. And then if you're out here, you notice it has leaves on it, so students from each school did the leaves and then they stuck them on and so.
Yeah.
We're going to actually take it and move from school to school, but it's pretty fragile, the leaves on it, so we're going to do something else. We'll do something else where they're, I can make some force in some, put them in each school. No, he's a little upset about that, he wanted it for us.
I do. I do, see.
I know, I got your hopes up, I know. Okay. Onto my goals. So, let's see. Goal one, by June 2020, based on continued mentorship by a superintendent, utilization of T models, principles, develop meaningful evaluative feedback toward improved instructional practice. So we have been doing walkthroughs, I actually did one today at Boylston. They seem, they seem to be going well. We've sort of narrowed down what we look at, what we focus on. And we also have been sort of, sort of categorizing our teachers into their needs. This came from some of the training I did, the A B T training. So that seems to be, that seems to be working well. I think the, the real evidence will be at the end of the year to see what the teachers, who the principal have been working with, if they've, if they've utilized those things in the classroom. So, you know, my expectation is by, by June, we will have some, you know, some concrete feedback from teachers to say, you know, this really, really worked or in this relied or I haven't been able to use anything, I hope that's not the case. So far, based on what I've seen, I think it's going well.
So you, you expect to solicit feedback from the teachers?
Correct.
And whether the feedback was useful to them?
Whether, whether the principals working with them on a regular basis.
Okay.
You know, ultimately, that's what you want, you want to make sure, if it's, if that work that the principals are doing with them is helping their instruction, not the curriculum, not, obviously, the instructional piece. You know, my, just in my discussions with the principals, it seems to be going well, but I don't think we know for sure until the teachers say, and we want them to be honest about it, you know, this could have gone in a different direction. Because I plan on continuing this work. I've had discussions with Dr. Pierre Durkin, who's done a lot of the work in this area, and John Safie, they, they, they led that seminar I went to. And so they're very confident that this is the kind of work you want to be doing in the classroom, so.
Yeah, so ultimately, the work this year, the feedback from the teachers is really feedback to the principals.
Correct.
About effectiveness of their work, not that, not, we're not really concerned right now, ultimately, about the impact on the teachers' instruction per se, but on whether the teachers have found it useful for improving their practice.
Right.
And that's feedback to the principals.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So that's that goal. So the next one was a community engagement goal. So one of the action steps was to try to attend these school-wide events and, you know, just to create some spaces where I would be available. I did attend the open houses. So so far, I didn't have a lot of work, but I have to say, it was early in the year, so there was, bussing questions that always come up. And I guess that in some ways is good because, you know, it let Bob and I take, you know, a road trip and drive several routes to see, you know, what the parents were talking about. And in some cases, we found that those roads couldn't be traveled, and then, you know, in some cases, we thought this is, this is something we could probably open up as a bursary. So I say it wasn't useful, but it's, it has had some, somehow, some effect. Second one, a few policies related to equity. And so that's ongoing, that's, we're doing work with the school committee, policy subcommittee, yeah. Let's see. And then to try to get out to town events, I've made it out, done the one so far, Doug Berlin, old home. I've made it out, done the one so far, Doug Berlin, old home days. And I'm, I'm still healthy. I was in a high eating contest, so I'm still okay. Hope it stays that way. I'd have to go to.
Did you go eat muffins too? Didn't you go eat muffins too?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Had you put on some weight in that time?
No, no, I only ate a few muffins because I was in a hurry. And I don't want to look, I, you know, I already put like a dollar in, so I don't want to take two muffins. But actually, you know, that's been good because, you know, and I got to get there more because when you go in and they say, "It's good to see you back," it means they probably haven't been there enough. But I sat down with Abby.
Good to see her.
Yeah. And gave her an update. And just from that conversation, she had a program that someone brought in. And it's actually a Berlin resident who does a lot of work. It's called the Inner Explorer. It's just a sort of mindfulness program. And I don't know if we're going to do it or not, but it was, you know, just having that discussion, you know, that's where you get some of those ideas. So.
Are you feeling that it's worth your while to be going to these events? Is it creating some kind of impact that you feel is going to pay off?
Well, yeah, I think just those things. I think not every time I go out and get something, but, you know, you know, you're visible and I think they want to see, they have questions for you. And that, that, 19 Cal has a lot of retired teachers who go there. They had a lot of questions about the schools, but then, you know, they're too far removed to, they're not going to come in, they don't have that level of interest. But sort of interest about how education works today. Some of them have been retired for 15, 20 years. They remember being the teachers and doing the drills where kids had to get under the decks or, yeah, so they go way back. So they're good conversations and they have, they have some decent ideas. I mean, there's some things that are just, they're just tried and true, you know. So I think it is. I'll know for sure. I don't plan on stopping, even if it wasn't effective this year, I think it's a good thing to do. And it's, it's good for me, you know, I feel connected more to the community when I do it. But it's not always, it's not always, sometimes some people just want to, you know, just want a event a little bit, you know, and so they might not take the time to come to your office to pack. They say that they will. And you get something out of that too. So that's, that's that goal. And then the third one was the professional development goal. I've been meeting with my mentor on a regular basis, not just the, you know, I'm fortunate that one, she's the executive director of MARS, so she has a lot of insight into regional, regionalization piece. So we just sort of, and she was a superintendent in a regional district, so I get that experience. And because we know each other, we've worked with each other before, I can call her, not just to set updates that we've agreed to. I can pretty much call her anytime and talk to her, go have lunch and say, you know, I can't figure this out, this is bothering me, what would you do in this situation? So that's been good. And then the attending the ABT training, that's been excellent. And, you know, Dr. Durkin has offered to come out and help me with this, with the principal, working with principals, actually come in. So it might be something I might look into next year, have her go through with me to say, you know, maybe you can do this. So I don't, I don't know about that. So that's the three goals. They're going okay. There was, I know Susan, you had mentioned that the new, the new instrument, which requires four or six goals, and I have three, and you asked if I wanted to do another one. So the answer is no, I don't want to do another one. But there's actually something I'm going to work on, I'm beginning to work on, so it's actually like that. And it actually would be a good, good goal.
Yep.
I'm starting to work on the, or doing some thinking, or I've been thinking about it since I got here. But only now am I starting to see numbers that are more concerning in terms of enrollment. And so I'm planning some, so February, I'm going to do some, a presentation on enrollment and projections. And then start meeting with the town managers and probably the planning board. And I'll, I'm going to have Bob involved also. Just do some, just do some scenarios. We have 50 kids, we have 100, we have 150. And some of those projections in Boylston are out to 150 addition kids by '25, '26. That's not too far away. And though Ace has a lot of, Ace has room, you know, he has some room in the school. He doesn't have, he doesn't have a lot of faculty to grow. So that's something we have to look at five years down the road. So we're hoping to do these projections. I'll write the goal up for February and give it to you just to say, this is, this is my plan. That's the outline, and it actually will fit in with what I'm doing. So if you, if you agree to it, I'll do that. I'll write it up.
Absolutely.
Is that something you?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we need to vote on that additional goal?
That's the chair.
And we voted up your original goals to accept your original goals. It seems like maybe we might need to vote for the additional fourth. I think it's a really good idea to have that fourth in there because it also falls into the management and operations strand, evaluation standards, and there are no, you have no goals falling in that standard. So that gives us something to evaluate in that standard.
And it's probably going to be something I'll continue next year. I think it'll need to be continued into next year, the enrollment piece. Because I think the enrollment projections for next year in Berlin, once those, once those departments start to get built, will look different as they have in Boylston. They look like a dip, like a downtrend, until these buildings actually, these residents actually start to get built. And then, so there's a couple of year lag. But I think we should have those discussions with boys and also, even though, I mean, Berlin also, even though the numbers don't look like that quite yet, so it'll probably go to next year. So.
May I make a suggestion about that?
Absolutely.
So I think it would be a good idea to consider this sort of as a first read of the amendment to your goals, this, this conversation, so that when we come back next month, you would have a fully written amendment. And then we could just vote on it and you would refer about it by, through a document. So that's a procedure, recommendation.
And I'll, I'll put it in the document and post it before that.
Yes.
So what I heard was it could possibly be a goal. And I agree. I think ultimately what I want to see would be next meeting be the first.
First read?
I would not want to count this as a first read. I would want to see the official thing written up. But I'm willing to bypass that. What I was trying to quickly do is understand as relates to, from a timing perspective, if we can talk about the timing perspective, that makes sense to, makes sense to vote on it tonight or look at tonight as a first read or the final next month if it helps because we want to get that goal in. Does it matter to that? But otherwise, if there's no, from a time perspective, if it doesn't matter, why push the first reads next month? When we have an official document in place, does it matter from a time perspective?
It, it doesn't matter to me because I'm going to do it anyway. And so next, next month, I plan on presenting to the committee projections and what they look like. So it's totally up to the committees.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable if you feel like it would feel better to see it as a first read next month than wait. I feel like this, this is, this is technically the mid-year formative feature on the evaluation cycle. So this is like a mid-course correction in a way. Say, okay, we need, we need one more goal, we're short one goal. He's working on this anyway, we can see it coming. I'm comfortable saying we'll read it next month, give feedback, formalize it, and that'd be March.
Yeah. Two meetings on the calendar.
Two meetings on the calendar for September?
I believe.
Yes. Oh, so.
Once a budget hearing.
And, and the February, we could, we could have it rolled out.
Yeah, so I think.
Right?
Yeah. I think I'd want next month to be a first read only because.
For the first meeting of the.
Be the first read. First reading, the first meeting in next month be the first read. Based on, and again, now I'm just becoming chair today. I'm honestly in line with what the future agenda items have, we're currently in agenda. But if he's going to be presenting on enrollment and his concerns are going to tie to that, that's the data point that supports the first read of the MOU. So now we have first read, we have first read and the data points that contribute to that and push the vote to the next meeting.
The second meeting.
The second meeting. That's what I'd like to do.
That's a, that's a good goal to have, Joe. That could be interesting.
Awesome, thank you.
Bob then?
Okay. So first item I have is the quarterly budget status report update. I posted a few reports on the Google Drive. Kristy posted them, actually. I wasn't going to comment in a lot of detail. I have a couple of highlights. I'll just point out, there's one summary report by school that kind of highlights. And you'll see kind of a consistent theme is that the instructional and instructional support category has positive budget transfers. We're increasing funds allocated to that area. And there's a decrease in fixed costs, which is mostly benefits costs. We did have a lower dental rate than we budgeted. And in elementary schools, we anticipated picking up a little bit more of additional enrollments with the teachers coming on board. And we did pick up some additional, but not as much as we anticipated. So we have some savings. So we took the money related to benefits, transferred it towards instruction. Some of that's to cover costs of our contract, our new contract. But a lot of that is actually to reduce the amount of school choice we're using to fund our teachers' salaries because we have a structural deficit. We're kind of overspending our school choice more than we're taking in our revenue. So this substantially addresses that, not, partially addresses it to Honto. But that will be something that we continue to look at. Couple of other quick comments, just the charter school and school choice numbers. Now that we're a single district, I don't have detail yet. I will get that in January. So as of yet, I've just left those in kind of an unallocated school. And I'll be taking those, it's kind of like a fourth item below to Honto. And I'll be taking those costs and allocating them to schools once they get the supporting details to which students it relates to. So most of that money is, would actually get put into to Honto, a small piece to Boylston, I believe. We, we still have a budget freeze in Boylston Elementary. I looked at where we stood last year. We had about double the money at this time last year that we have available right now. You know, we did have money to fund some purchases at the end of the year for some, some, some needs of the school. So I'm not necessarily concerned that we're going to overspend our budget. But I don't anticipate having much to fund anything beyond kind of what we need to do. We do want to support what's important in the school. So Ace and I have conversations when things arise. And we're not going to not do something that needs to be done, but we're proceeding cautiously. And the budget freeze just means if there's something discretionary that we can hold off on, we really, we're going to try to hold off on it. So that's the budget update. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is the, so we're implementing a weekend disinfectant cleaning program. Jeff, did you want to comment on that?
Yeah, you know, this time of year, during the cold and flu season, we have lots of absences due to cold and flu. So we're always looking for better ways to clean the building and make sure they stay healthy. And our, our facilities manager, Steve Sotteri, took the initiative and found a method, electrostatic, a way to apply disinfectant electrostatically. So essentially, instead of just spraying a surface and then trying to wipe the surface down, it actually is done with a backpack and spray and it coats entire surfaces with a very light coat of disinfectant. So, you know, if you sprayed it on the table, for example, it would get not only this surface, but, you know, underneath where kids touch. So schools have been using it. And schools in this area have reported that they've seen a marked difference in the amount of people out due to calls and hospitals have been using it. It just, uh, just seems to be a better method to apply disinfectant in the schools. I know Bob has some details.
Yeah, I can, I, there's included on the, I think I included a little bit on the, there's a link on the, the write-up that I had that explains the technology. I don't completely understand the science of it, so I won't get into that. But it's, it's kind of an efficient way of disinfecting the building. We want, we're going to do it on the weekends mainly because it's not really feasible to have them clean and then do this, there's not enough time. And, you know, my preference is also just to do it when nobody's in the building. My own personal preference, so, or there's, there's less impediments. So they're going to do it on the weekend. We're going to have a substitute custodian do this, so it's not going to be expensive. Somebody who's willing to, who's been substituting, who's willing to do this, we're not paying overtime. And the goal is really to, I think, I heard a pretty high number at Berlin Memorial in terms of percentage of absences. So there are periods of time where you see, you know, in our school district and others, and big spikes. And this will be something that helps. It's not to say that it's going to completely help and there's going to be cases where you get sick going to the store or something like that, but it should reduce sicknesses. One of the towns that Steve spoke with said the Athol Royalist and saw significant decline in, in illness-related absences when they've been doing this. So the areas will be, you know, basically common use areas and then non-food areas, so like lockers, wave room, bathrooms, locker rooms. And there's more detail here, but it's very effective in getting rid of some germs that otherwise wouldn't be eliminated.
And it's almost impossible to disinfect those surfaces, the candles on lockers, without flooding them with disinfectant. So this method is going to be a lot more efficient and effective at doing that.
And it's actually going to start the week after. Listed there, our facilities manager is out, which I forgot when I wrote this up. So we're going to start, he wants to be here the first time, so just monitor how it goes.
And we'd probably do it from, you know, like October through to April. Would have the program going when, when the cold season is the highest.
Just going to check the data afterwards and see how the attendance rates compare.
Yeah, it'll be interesting.
Or something. Interesting to see.
Yeah.
I heard there was some kids, expected kids that went home today at BS.
Up until then, the attendance wasn't in Berlin's range, but.
Kids went home today, fevers. Wonderful time.
I had teachers, we quite would tell them about the program, request that we spray in the classrooms. Because we're not, we're not planning to do, do that, but.
Spray the kids when they walk in.
Superintendent didn't say that. No plan for that.
So there's more detail on the report, but just wanted to share that before we roll that out. And the last item I have is a business item, just want to request approval. This is one of those things that, you know, we gave our thought to how we should set some things up with regionalization. And we found that with donation accounts, we would be a little bit, what I proposed on there is a list of donation accounts I want to set up, yellow highlighted ones are new ones. And this will enable us to track donations to the school and make sure we're spending according to donor terms, make it more effective. And one of the ones that we added was school donation accounts for school lunch. We received donations for that and they're earmarked for specific schools, so we want to have three separate accounts. And we anticipate this to be an ongoing thing. A lot of school districts are doing this now where school lunch debt becomes an issue. And I don't know if you're familiar with the kind of the literature or discussions about. about food shaming, but basically, DESI has advised and advocates have advised to provide a meal regardless of what the school lunch balance is and then separately pursue any balances with the parents. I'd say our district is in pretty good position relative to other districts. From what I see, we don't have some issues other districts have, but it doesn't mean, we do have negative balances and there are students who will benefit from these donation accounts that will be able to use. So I'd request approval of the accounts listed as shown by the school committee.
Okay. We'll do all of that.
And that's my report.
Thank you.
I'd like to, the first topic is seal of bilingual literacy. So I asked our world language department chair, Sadie Brzezinski, to, to come and hopefully give a general overview of Department of Education's seal of bilingual literacy and then if there's any questions that you would have from what I had enclosed in the packet.
Okay. Hopefully can answer everybody's questions. So a seal of bilingual literacy is a relatively new seal offered by the Department of Education, and it recognizes students who are proficient in two languages, one of them being English. And the way that students qualify for this seal of bilingual literacy is they have to have a certain score on the ELA grade 10 MCAS as well as an approved exam in their other language. So most schools in our area are using the Apple. The Apple costs about $20. Students can retake different sections of the Apple if they would like to. They're also, they also accept AP exams, so if their language is offered as an AP exam, they may take it as well. Another exam is the stamp. It's not as popular in our area, but it is available, and those have some of the more popular languages. So that's a general outline of what's going on and what it is. How it would benefit our students, I'm just going to go through. It encourages students to study and master languages, certifies attainment of bilingual skills, it recognizes the value of language diversity, provides employers with a method of identifying people with language and bilingual literacy skills, it provides universities with a method to recognize and give credit to applicants for attainment of high-level skills and languages. It prepares students with skills that benefit them in the labor market and the global society. And it strengthens intergroup communication and honors the multiple cultures and languages in the community. So I think this is a really important thing that Tohoto should be partaking in, and I really do think we'll have students that will participate in and qualify for it. Most people don't think Tohoto is as diverse as it is, but it's amazing when you start talking and looking at the languages that other students speak at home or learn here.
Just sitting around the table and we were discussing this, you know, Sadie and the other world language teacher who was at the meeting, you know, we were able to come up with, you know, five to seven students who, you know, we knew at this, at this time would probably be able to take the test and be able to qualify for the seal of bilingual literacy already. So I think if, you know, it's something that would benefit our students, would, you know, allow them to get the recognition that they deserve for being able to master, you know, two languages. And do so, you know, Sadie had mentioned AP exams, you know, AP exams are expensive, you know, they cost, you know, upward of $90 to $95 for an exam, where these other, you know, offerings are $20 for an exam and it can then can be retaken in specific sections. So, you know, we would like to go ahead and, you know, apply to the Department of Education to just be included as a school and Commonwealth that offers the seal of bilingual literacy so we can recognize those students who have the mastery.
Do students have to have taken coursework or they just have to demonstrate, not just, sorry, demonstrate their mastery? So for instance, maybe they come from a bilingual home and they've, they've been learning two languages. They can, I assume, go and take an exam and get this certification.
As long as they score, they have a sufficient score for the ELA MCAS in English.
Yes.
And score, they have a certain score that would qualify them in their language.
Yes, so it doesn't, it's not dependent on coursework in any way necessarily. And also the, as I recall, when I was reading about this, was, there's an alternative assessment also, sorry, right, for languages that are less popular, maybe not as common in this area.
Yes, right.
And they, those requirements have to do with finding other adults who can look at their work and certify competency in some way. Does that cost anything to the district, do you know?
I mean, we would, you know, obviously, it, you know, really is a case-by-case basis, what, you know, especially with those languages that are not more common. And we would, you know, help the student in the research and, you know, how to get that assessment completed, you know, so we would work with the student and the family.
Right. And the opposite language acquisition is they communicate very well and are very open to giving any feedback or connecting you with other schools that have come across a language and they found, you know, they found a solution, they found a company that offers someone to come in, so.
Good.
Excellent.
I think that's fantastic because, you know, in our work world, we really do value those bilingual and trilingual employees, so to recognize it at the high school level, I think is indicative of the global community at large, and I think it's great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
You're very welcome.
For staying up late.
Sure your kids are waiting up for you.
Oh, yes, they are.
To piggyback on that, there is a request for a new club at Tohoto, Spanish Club, and this follows suit to the previously approved club, the French Club. You know, students are interested in, you know, promoting the Spanish culture and languages further at Tohoto, as well as to develop language skills, but also sort of to celebrate those students and the Spanish culture. So we have had that request. We do have a faculty member who is volunteer to get, you know, to be an advisor for this, for this club. So we would like to take a look at making this club an official club. And again, it will be my job to take a look at the clubs that have, have been approved and see if we have financial ability to do that this year. And if we don't, you know, the student who brought this forward is aware that, you know, we would have to wait till next year to make sure that that position is budgeted for as well as, as well as the advisor. So we're looking for the request to, to add a Spanish club at Tohoto. And student council overnight using facilities, so as Ryan had said back in December, the Thursday before our winter break, this is something that our student council learned from the MASC state conference, is that quite a few other schools, a lot of larger schools, do a student council overnight sleepover at their schools. They typically do it at the very beginning of the year before school even starts, but our kids wanted to do it, they wanted to be sort of little elves. At the school, they decorated, they took, they decorated every single teacher's door in the building, so when the teachers came in, in the morning, their doors were decorated, you know, by the elves. They also just helped in preparation. And also, it's, you know, it's kind of a neat way to, to have the students bond together. I mean, how many people can say that they, you know, slept overnight in their school?
Most principals.
Most of these principals. So it really is, they would like to, they'd like to hopefully sort of continue, continue this tradition. You know, obviously the advisors were with them, you know, overnight as well. And the kids didn't, they didn't stay from, you know, 2:15 all the way until the next morning. They did go home and then they reported back here, I mean, it was about 8:00 or 8:30 at night and began their elf duties, so. That is my, that's my report. If you have any other questions at all. Thank you.
I was trying to generate an elf question.
Being aware of the time, we'll try to, try to keep it brief. But as you can see, you have a copy of my report. We are underway and I'm in your benchmark, so we'll have that data at a future meeting to report and share out. It helps us track student progress, not only the mid-year, it doesn't just track the students that we're currently having intervention with, but it also is that other large net we cast to make sure nobody's slipping through the cracks. That was helped in great part by my second item, the Chromebooks. We now have a class set of Chromebooks down in second grade. They share. This has helped a lot, the second grade AMZWAT test is actually online, it's on the computer. So it's a new experience for our second graders and second grade teachers. In the past, what we've done is we've borrowed fourth grade Chromebooks and brought them down, but we now have this new set. And I, I feel like I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the work that the PTO did to provide those Chromebooks. I think people sometimes don't realize or forget the large amount of the technology that we have in the building and a lot of the extras, the things that make coming to school fun for the kids and easier and fun for the teachers, comes because we have a really, two very committed parent groups. This in particular is from the PTO, but I know the BEF was here the other month when I wasn't, and they shared some of the grants that they were wanting to teach yourself. Any chance I can recognize the parents for all of their work? It makes a big difference in our school. Also on there is a PBIS update, you know, for, for those who may be a little less initiated, we, what we found is our PBS program where we reinforce positive expectations is very popular, especially in the lower grades. As kids get older, they get a little bit less infatuated with the Bobcats and going to the Bobcat store, so we've continued the tradition of fifth graders joining staff for, for a big community event before break. We did have our floor hockey game just before the, the winter break. And it was, it was a lot of fun. I'm not going to say which team won, but I have not been on a losing team in five years. And then just the last thing I wanted to bring you to your attention is, you know, the upper grades, we've talked a lot about sports, and the lower grades, one of the things that we've, we've been working on is the Lego League program. And so Jen Standard has kind of spearheaded that, she's a parent, again, a parent in the community, who coaches and we, this year we had, for the third year, we had fourth and fifth graders go to WPI to compete. It was probably, it was the most successful team that we've had so far. They completed more missions with the robots. But more, I was more proud of the collaboration that they showed and the teamwork they showed. A lot of people think that they, they go to these things and they, they build robots and they have fun and they do those things, but they talk about a problem, in this case they were trying to save, save the turtles, and they come up with a solution. They create a presentation, they go before judges, you know, it's, it's pretty heavy stuff for, for fourth and fifth graders and they're competing with middle schoolers as well. So I was, I was really proud of their efforts and I'd like to, to thank the parent volunteers that, that made that possible. The final item is upcoming events. You are all always welcome to come to any event that you see here or anything that you don't. It's great to, great to have you guys in the building and, you know, let me know you're coming by, we'll be ready for you.
That's great.
Thank you. Campbell?
Howdy, howdy. Good evening, everybody. You've got my reports, I'll spare you a lot of the...
Does this guy stop real quick? Does this chair allow me to take it so you cannot wear them?
I believe this is right in my contract.
Don't tie this.
I was hoping you were going to say that. Wait till next year. That's what we do. I was trying to be brief and now you've got me. So I will go through some of the, Mr. Thompson and I share a lot of the same things that are going on at our schools. I did want, I was cognizant as there was an exodus from the room earlier, to acknowledge the presence of Mrs. Sheik back here, who's our fabulous, one of our fabulous fourth grade teachers, to thank her for staying and coming and to point out to the committee that the Berlin teachers always send a representative and they come for the whole thing and it's a sign of their commitment to what we're doing as a district. So I'm really proud that, that you hung out there. Thanks for...
Thank you.
Raisins in the mail.
All right, hold on, I got it.
We'll have your room cleaned first with a big sprayer. So I will skip the things that are obvious, I just, a quick reminder for everybody, Berlin Memorial School was chosen for NAEP testing with nine-year-olds. It will tell us not a single thing, but we're all kind of looking forward to the experience. The kids, it's a paper pencil test that the teachers will recognize that children have never experienced before because they're all nine. But it's good to be a part of that, that process. The preparation for it has been very, very interesting, that people from this organization actually come in and they administer the test. I have teachers in the room, but they do all of the work, they do all of the preparation. It's been very, very interesting. And we're doing our little bit to support the nation's report card.
Is there a question on that?
Yeah, sure.
So was BMS just randomly chosen?
Randomly, so BMS was randomly chosen, it's all nine-year-olds, so it's every student in the school born in 2010, third and fourth graders, and then in that group of 30 kids, they were randomly assigned to either a reading or a math test. Whole thing from hi-how audio to thanks, select, goodbye, takes 90 minutes, so it's not a huge commitment of time. Yeah, it'd be, it's just kind of interesting to see, to see how it goes. They're very formal about it.
I may make an observation, I used to think that they were following me, because I changed school sequences. Every school I went to got selected by NAEP, I'd say, might be a tracker or something. What is this? Good job, John.
So, see, I'm following your footsteps, that's my role model. And the only other thing I wanted to bring to everybody's attention is we have started our grab-and-go breakfast program. Berlin is not a community that you would necessarily associate with a need for early morning food, but we do have a group of kids who we know either don't or can't access a good breakfast. We're still working through some of the details in terms of how to get breakfast items to kids without interrupting teaching.
Oh, is it true?
It is, it really is, and since the kids don't come in early, it's even harder. You can't just take them, you know, you can't go on the bus and say, okay, you three poor kids, come home with me. We've tried very, very hard to be aware of and not identify kids who need, as opposed to kids who just want to participate, and we're still working through a lot of that as we go along. We've been doing it, geez, it'll be a week tomorrow that we've been doing, so five days. About 20 kids participate on one level or another. One of the things we learned is that there's a, in addition to a group of kids who can't access, or a group of kids who just aren't hungry at 6 o'clock in the morning, but they get to school and they're ravenous, so we're kind of beating that beat too. So I'm, Mrs. Molnar kind of pushed me on this a little bit and I'm glad that I listened to her encouragement.
And our schedule is a little bit more conducive to it, too, having a recess in the morning and having some overlap time with the buses.
I see. I couldn't hear anything about that.
We relate to the breakfast table, but we got things to get to eat. We still got to eat.
That's good.
Thank you. Okay, next up.
This was, initially, we're looking at the use of school facilities and Jeff's ability to waive the fees for town government or nonprofit groups, and we came to see that the, there were school use, facility use policies for each of the schools, and they were each different, and that was under our old system. And we thought we really needed to consolidate the safety, hybrid, one regional policy and strip away the material that really was procedural, should go into the application form, and keep the policies that were clean separate. So we asked Kristi if she would help do that work, because she did a great job pulling these disparate policies together. And the public language is in there now, also that superintendent has the authority to waive fees for scout groups and that kind of thing, which we were originally concerned with. So we think, we think this is in decent form now as a standalone, and we've also asked Kristi to start pulling other policies that are traveling under three umbrellas from previous, before we were legalized, and see if we can do the same with some other policies. So I think this, does anybody have any questions on that? Looked like a lot of redlining, but that could just be a three policies into one.
Mr. Chairman, ma'am, I have solicited feedback from the principals, and I do have some that I'll share with you at the next policy subcommittee meeting.
Some changes?
Some changes, questions, so we can, we can get together at the next meeting and I'll have all that feedback for you.
Okay, so there's not a vote tonight?
No, there's no vote tonight, no.
Okay, so this is, this is a...
Just an update.
Equity policy discussion. This really was preliminary discussion that I mentioned earlier in relation to field trips. I'm not sure, that it falls under equity per se, but looking at field trip policies, we've just started to explore perhaps some policy responses to making changes to some of the longstanding field trips, or, you know, creating maybe participation thresholds potentially for field trips. We're just in the beginning discussions of that, and want to make you aware of the fact that we're beginning some talk about that, so if you have thoughts about that type of approach to policy and looking at the field, changes to field trips in particular, I would say, let us know, but stay tuned to this word, we have more, a lot more conversation about that. That's just an update. Any other questions about that so far? We don't have anything tangible for you to look at yet there. The, it says inter-district transfer policy discussion, we did not have that...
We tabled that.
Yeah, we did not have that discussion yet, that's coming up, that was tabled. And athletic fees review, I believe we sent that directly to the school committee and felt that that was not in our policy domain, so I think that's, is that elsewhere in the agenda?
Yes, it's for action.
Yeah. That we did not.
We did not, we decided it wasn't in the policy subcommittee's part view, it would be more of a committee at large item.
Our domain.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Looking to see, okay, I didn't see the, I'm going to ask a question.
Absolutely. I would request that the administration be given more time to prepare a recommendation for athletic fees. We're looking at the bus issue for football as well as the sustainability of what the fees are relative to expenses, and would request more time if possible.
Yeah, you took the words right out of my mouth, I was going to ask that question if any of this, but it sounds like a good topic, this discussion never had, but I was going to tie it back to the conversation on the busing stuff and some of that, so, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it?
Great. So then, just right now, we will be, I'll just first read. It is to school committee goals. I just continue to do this.
Yeah, yeah, so, Kristi uploaded for me this superintendent evaluation guidance document that's been reworked from the version we used last year, based on the department's updated evaluation guidelines and rubrics and tools and timelines. The, you may have looked, if you looked at this document earlier, you may have looked at version two, there is now a version three in there that has the correct leadership standards rubric in there, so just make sure you have the final version. It's a long document because it has all this, all the tools, we've kind of, if you think about what the state has given us, they have guidance document, then you go to another document, it's in a rubric, and then you go to another document, it's, it's standards, it's like across lots of documents. So I've gone and I've pulled everything that we need to have at our hands to do the evaluation into one document. That's why it's so long, because the, you know, standards of the rubric are multiple pages, so we just plopped it all into the same document. The other thing that's new in there is we have talked about a school committee self-assessment tool that would travel in concert with the superintendent's evaluation, so we're also concurrently evaluating our own performance. And this is the tool, I had said earlier that MASC was developing an online survey tool, and they've now completed that draft, and I put a copy of that whole tool into the document as well, which is multiple pages again. And that's, that's slated for using at the end of this year, at the close of this cycle, so that it can, it basically, the idea being that we should, in my view, we shouldn't be evaluating the superintendent without also evaluating ourselves, because our own performance may impact something, some way that we're seeing the superintendent's performance, so we should be looking at those hand-in-hand. So we've put those two processes together for the end of this cycle, and that should then inform, the results of that should inform our goal setting for the following year. So that time, the timeline is in this document, and that's important to be aware of. I think the, the content in describing the evaluation process has, I've structured it around five key actions, and I think everybody else will, we should read that section, the five key actions, because it really describes what we should be doing. And the timeline is the other thing you should take a look at. And then come March, in March, we have, I believe it's March, end of March, we have a workshop with MASC on superintendent evaluation, and we will be referring to much of the content in this document. But I, my main concern is that you not be put off by the length of it, because most of that is just the tools, but the content at the front, that describes what, what this is about, is something everybody on the committee should be familiar with. So we'll spend more time looking at that in March. At the February meeting, I don't know if we need to, I need some advice from the chair here, this is a change, is a change in the rubric that we're using, the evaluation rubric. The state has, it used to be that there was a rubric describing leadership behaviors for all administrators, school and district together. Now they've developed a rubric that's specific to district leadership, so that we can more directly see the superintendent's performance reflected in this rubric. And so that's a change from the tools that were used in the past. So I don't know if we need to vote to accept that rubric as, you know, part of what we're doing, I don't know what the rules are on that. If it says a change in the contract in any way, or, I don't know. Jeff, do you have an opinion on whether we should be voting on that rubric, or you just accept that that's, well, that's the new model from the state, so of course we're using that?
That's what I would think.
Okay, so you may not feel a need to vote on that personally?
No, because every other superintendent is going to be evaluated using the same tool, so it's not specific to this committee.
Okay. The, sorry?
What he said.
Okay, I'm good, and everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
There is a section in there in the, that, five key actions for successful evaluation at the front of this document, it has a, a section called organize for success from the start, and I feel that we have not done all the things in that list, and I would like to see a couple of people appointed to look at that list and make sure that we've figured out everything on that list before we get closer to the evaluation. I don't think it should be just me sort of doing that, I think we should have a couple of people looking at that list and coming back to the meeting in February with any recommendations that need to be addressed.
So, so you're asking for additional, I guess the ask is, you're asking for additional assistance that relates to your presidential piece of the document there?
Yeah, and making sure that we have taken care of the tasks that are going to facilitate a successful evaluation.
Can you share with me quickly, self admittedly, I don't think I have read those, I can't speak to them, can you share with me a quick synopsis as it relates to what that sort of entails, I guess, so I can sort of better know that requirement?
Okay. Let me pull it up. So there are, one, two, three, six, so there are six categories of tasks, making sure, some tasks relating to the timeline, making sure the timeline is all doable, the number of goals and focus indicators, which Jeff is taking direction to write for goal, and we also need indicator with that goal, Jeff, for the standard, focus indicator for that new goal, make sure if you get that one too. Forms, I don't have all the items listed here. Evidence for assessing performance, decision-making process, and recording ratings, and compiling ratings. So those are all pieces that you normally will go through and make sure you've got all those decisions related to those things, all that stuff figured out before you launch into your evaluation. So many, many of these pieces we have are described in this document, but there's some pieces that need to be confirmed or addressed that I may not have taken care of. They're all on pages 13 to 15 in this document.
So first off, I guess, do we, do we have a volunteer? Would you like to volunteer to assist Susan to sort of finalize and pull together some of these action items that relate to organization?
Since I'm in vacation mode, since it's starting tonight, I would be glad to work with Susan. I already worked with her on, I know, on the policy subcommittees, so.
Okay, so, thank you, appreciate that, though. It's all that easy. I want to be considerate to, right, moving forward.
Yes.
We are short a committee member, so, you know, we all, outside of just volunteering our time on these evenings, volunteer on the remainder of the committees and goals and X, Y, and Z, so I want to make sure we will, we're at least considerate and sure we, so, thank you for volunteering.
Appreciate that, I'll be in touch.
Okay, I'm glad to do it.
Thank you. I think that's, I think that's it, just don't be put off, the main part that I'd like people to take a look at is the front of this document that describes the process. You just know that every tool that's mentioned is in the, is in the, all the rest. If you want to take a look at the self, the schools committee self-assessment process and tool, that's in there too, and you may want, like to take a peek at that.
So with the handbook, I've just been little by little adding to it, things that I think are stuff that, as a new committee member, I would want to see or I would want to know. So I guess I'm just asking you, when you have time, or if you have looked at it, any comments or feedback. The very first page is essentially the table of contents of what I think should be in there, and I see that Susan and I have some overlap, like the norms and standards are in that superintendent document, because a lot of, we kind of use that as a self-evaluation sort of in the past, and I think it's really important to have in front of our face and in our mind. So, anyway, so I'm hoping for any feedback or suggestions you have. And just added a little bit between the last meeting and this.
Okay. Yeah, it's looking good.
Keep doing the left eight on finance?
Yeah, sure. I believe everybody filled out the quick financial assessment. I say we go back and look and see what people were struggling with, which I know what I was, and possibly put a couple different things, just each meeting, just to talk about what the, those terms mean, and just so everybody gets a little more familiar. So we just, I'd say, let's pick a couple each, each meeting, and just discuss it.
The goal we set out with Bob, we have two meetings now, the goal that we set out is, we don't want to incur additional workload for anybody, right? We need to make sure from a school committee perspective, from that goal perspective, we deliver on what the achievements are for that goal, but at the same time, do require some time with Bob, some help with Bob. So during meetings, I think what we came up with is narrowing down using the assessments, but also areas that Bob will gain value in the work that we do, so meaning, for example, a topic like audits, right, I think that was one of the topics that we came up with, and some of our, some of our auditing, not necessarily financial auditing, but auditing around processes and that type of stuff, we talked about where Bob can work with us on that, deliver back the information to the, to the school committee, which in turn, I think then can be pushed to Angela to add to the handbook, to build up the financial literacy component of the handbook, right? But also delivers a value on, because it's a, it's a piece that he has, maybe a gap, that he sees a gap where we can officially have... that he sees a gap, or we can officially have him with that, so. That would be the goal, and that will be, what we sort of come back with, we deliver. What the format of that will be, I'm not sure. We have, we have next meeting, we'll probably come up with that. That's where we are from that standpoint.
So do you think we should just meet with Bob and kind of narrow down what, what needs to be put in the handbook?
Yeah, yeah, well, obviously, no, we have all the data. We will streamline the data, and we'll have Bob to highlight the focus areas.
It's funny how similar these surveys are. I looked at one and go, oh, this is mine. I was like, wait, that's not mine. Oh, that's mine. Because there, there are definitely certain topics that need a little assistance from.
I, I did it walking through it with Bob as we narrowed down if the questions were relevant and how many of my checkbooks I went into less knowledge, that I was not as informed as I may have thought I was. Sometimes the corporate world does not translate to the education world, so.
Well, the world of school finance is very different than the education world.
Right. Like, you're gonna share these with Bob, or Bob's seen these, or?
Bob has not seen those yet. I guess I, I was, my, our goal, Keith and I's goal was to present them in a condensed format, which, which stat ranks the, the areas for most needed. Any questions?
A lot of good work going on there.
All right, we are to our business items. I'm looking at a little bit of somebody's, I'm looking at, at business item A here. We are voting, this is the vote to, to replace, is the word, should this, is it?
Do you want to cancel that?
This is a vote to cancel now. Okay. Okay, do I have a motion to cancel the Honda Grade Six, the Grade Six field trip project? Do we need a vote to cancel? Can the superintendent just withdraw the request?
Yeah.
Well, you, you voted on the first read already, right?
No, we, we just read.
No, it was on the bottom of the agenda last time.
It was a first read, Chris.
Yeah, so they already voted to.
Yeah. We don't vote on first reads.
Oh, you didn't accept it on a first read?
No, they never accept on a first read.
Yeah.
So first read was last month, and this month would be a vote.
Well, they can just withdraw it, then they don't need me.
Right. Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we'll throw it. Withdraw. We saw in the draft, well, first of all, thank you, Susan, for, so, just putting it out there, I, I write reports, I write a sales guy email, so, it's, I appreciate you looking over that. I'm not sure, did everybody have an opportunity to look at the report?
Yes.
So I think this is my.
Yes, someone corrected my name too, thank you.
So assuming unless anybody has any changes they want to make to the changes that Susan made, and as well, we'll remove the, we'll remove the statistical piece that you wanted to remove, just to give you some background on that, I wasn't necessarily feeling that needed, when I took over writing the report for Boylston, that information had been previous years provided to Boylston. So I just continued the process of providing that information to Boylston, but as a committee, we believe that that information is not relevant or required, it's, it's fine, we'll leave it to Boletta.
We'll have opinions about that to watch out for.
I'm glad to vote, I have to make a motion that we approve it with the edits. I, I thought altogether was a good document.
Okay, so taking out the, the MCAS?
Correct. Okay. Did you just make that motion? Do I just make that? Or prove the?
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Was there a discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, was there a discussion?
I thought we had a discussion first. We did a little bit back to.
Just want to make sure that Keith and Angela had a chance to weigh in on that, whether the MCAS days should be in there.
That's fine, to take it out, I think that's fine.
All those in favor?
There is one section that doesn't have content. It said heading, leadership and administration, that doesn't have any content under it, I'm not sure what your tip was there.
I think we should, it might, that might have been a, just a consolidation effort, when I consolidated the three reports.
Should we just take that out?
Take that out.
You know, that reminds me of something, when I submitted the, the report last year to the town, when I sat at town, when I looked at the town report, a paragraph like in the middle was missing. So if we had read it, it was like, ah, where did that go? I don't know how it got lost, but it got lost.
The, does this chairmanship get changed now?
Yes, of course.
So that has to be, who's doing this?
So I'll, I'll accept all the edits and do that, and I'll submit it to the town administrator.
Okay, and so you'll update that?
I'll update that.
If you want to, if you want more reading, once you do that, I'll have the details of what's happening in town, and should stay.
Probably a good idea.
It is due by Tuesday.
Due Tuesday.
Due to the town by Tuesday.
The week from today.
Tonight, kind of.
It's gonna be late tonight. Do I have a motion to accept an honor donation of $100 to fund the unpaid Boylston Elementary lunch balances?
So.
Second.
Discussion?
Just worth appreciation.
Yeah, absolutely. All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the job description of the administrative assistant to the curriculum director, which is a new position? I'll make the motion to approve the job description of the administrative assistant.
So I say?
Well, sorry.
Okay, all those, uh, discussion?
Was this in the district improvement plan already, or was this something beyond what was originally?
This was something beyond, yes, this was something beyond.
Beyond what's in there.
This is in the, the dollars are in the plan, this is administrative support. I mean, it's a small number, barely shows up, but it is in the plan. It's called administrative support.
So you think it was in the plan, Bob, you're saying?
I do, but I can double check and.
Okay, it's like a day and a half, is that right? Uh, twelve, was it 12 hours?
12 hours, yes, yes, 12 hours.
12 hours, so.
I think it only appears in the budget piece, though, maybe that's why, because it doesn't appear in the curriculum piece, I think it only appears in the.
The budget piece.
The budget piece.
It might have been tied into like the benchmarking staffing, and then the dollars came out in the budget piece.
That might be why you didn't see it.
So, so we've accounted for, but not articulated it?
Right.
Thank you for clarifying.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Could I please have a motion to approve the creation of the donation accounts so described and made out by Bob during his business report?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then you saw you had a first read of the athletic fee review, which we're gonna wait for a recommendation from administration, and a first read, we can do a planning calendar.
May I make two comments? Just with the athletic fee, I know it doesn't really matter, because it's more to budget, but I'm curious, the last time we changed the fee when we get the report back, and the annual planning calendar, awesome. Just love it. I do have one recommendation or suggestion, that Marion Hoffman Award, I think it should be pushed out instead of March and April, it'd really, it'd be better April and May. That award is given in June at the fifth grade recognition, so March is.
Really early.
Too early, I think. So just moving a point member to April and then approve the dollar amount in May is plenty of time and not too far ahead.
Did you get that, Christie?
Thanks.
Christie, is that something you do, or is that something I do?
Previous chair had done that, but I'm happy to do that for you.
I don't know, previous chair did it, I'll continue to do it, I guess it was, I was just wondering, not gonna let them do it.
Taking really good notes, Bob. May I say something about that calendar?
Please.
Uh, please make sure you look at the dates, because it runs January to the end of December, so you need to look at the dates in the fall that you're approving. If you're all going on European vacations, or whatever, you won't be around, Elino Forum, I have to say that is one of the topics I have to look at now, being, there are a couple of dates that tend to target. We're not used to looking at the calendar that way, so it might not have gone beyond July.
Right. See, I didn't see the school committee self-assessment in May, but I think, did you remember putting that in? Do you think Cliff had agreed that this year for right now, we should put it in for the end of this year until we create any, if we make any changes to the.
I may have already been abrogating my responsibility, Christie.
I will add it for you. Thank you.
Anything, do we typically, Cliff, do you ask here typically any other, any other comments from the committee?
Yes.
Yeah. Hope you turn down to, I guess. School committee comments?
I attended most of the concerts in December, so they were wonderful. The teachers are doing such a great job, they really are, so, that's all.
That's good. Now, you might have to walk me through this one, Cliff. Okay. So do, now, do I close out open session first, or do I ask for a motion to go into the executive session?
You ask for motion to go to the executive session to discuss.
Could I please have a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, memorandum of agreement between the Berlin-Boylston Educators Association, MTA, and the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee, and to conduct strategy for negotiations with non-union personnel, and to reconvene in open session.
So was that, that was a call for a motion?
Call for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
This is a roll call, correct?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye. Oh, can I say, yes, so we're now going into executive session. All right, so, could I please entertain a motion to pass for requirements of further review with legal on item A, or just to approve the memorandum of agreement for Berlin-Boylston Educators and the Associate MTA?
I make a motion that would pass over. Second.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, could I please have a motion to a, to approve, as stated, the successor agreement for Superintendent Zayi's successor contract?
So moved.
Second.
Let Keith say it.
Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now make a, entertain a motion to close the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, or just general? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.